Good evening, it's Wednesday, May 27th, 6 o'clock. We have a special meeting this evening and the purpose of this meeting is to review potentially approved employment agreement with the new city administrator. And with that, we'll go with roll call.
Moline?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Orkinagin?
Yep.
Hillgar?
Here.
Coke?
Here.
Pritchett?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Sheila?
Here.
The pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the nation's ground, in the desolate riverbed of justice for all.
I think it's going to be a short meeting. The next item on this will be the city administrator employment agreement. And I will start out with, you know, I've been working with-
Read that three.
Start with the memo, Mr. Chair, with the email.
Okay. Shall we- Well, I just say we don't-
What do I say?
Well, then you want to carry it from there, Patrick?
Well, we just received an email. Sharon received it just recently. It's dated, it's timed to me at 5:54. We made copies, we just distributed to city council that Patrick Christopherson has withdrawn his interest to be the city administrator for the city of Brainerd. I would suggest that council has questions or of Sharon, we talk about the next steps we take from here. If I can just review a little bit of history, if that's okay, appropriate, or maybe you don't want me-
Yeah.
Just to quickly review, we had advertised for applicants for city administrator. We received 44 applicants. There were, you had a special meeting, you reviewed, narrowed that down to, I want to say it was six candidates that you interviewed?
Eight.
We had eight packets and then we-
I think seven showed up for the interview.
Yeah, one got a job and one declined, so we were six.
You then narrowed that, and you were, let's put it this way, what I understood is that you were very satisfied with the candidates that you had interviewed, you were very, felt that they were all good candidates, and that you were trying to narrow it down, narrow it down to the top candidates, and so you held a second round of interview, invited three individuals?
Two.
Two, thank you, and then one declined, and now the second one has now declined. So you have a variety of options, and I guess Sharon's expert at this, so I'll let her make suggestions as what you can, your alternatives are.
Well, may I comment that I'm extremely disappointed, you know, in what just happened because, I mean, the writing was on the wall about this particular person all along, and at the last minute to do this, you know, I'm going to go on record as saying I'm totally disappointed, you know, that at the last minute. But, go ahead.
Could I ask Sharon for an interpretation of this last?
Just on your line.
Unfortunately, when the parameters, et cetera, et cetera. What does that mean?
On Friday, I received information from Mr. Christopherson regarding a proposal, and we had talked about some things that was following direction from the council president to see, you know, what we could work out. Mr. Christopherson was given information that had been compiled by the city about the benefit package and about the salary plan, and there was a strong suggestion from various members of the council that we should really try to be at the bottom, at $96,000, and then forward. He has looked at this, worked with it, and he felt that the best he could do was to be at step B, and the parameters of that are laid out here. He was aware that there was some disappointment that we weren't able to get him down to $96,000. He was aware of that, and I think that he, and I shouldn't speak for him in so many words, but, and when I look at his message, I think, you know, it's important for a city administrator to start off on the right foot, and I, he was just feeling that there was angst about the salary and that that would carry over, that would impact his ability, you know, to have a good, solid relationship.
And to help that out, you know, I was working with Sharon, and last week, there was, you know, we had some calls going back and forth. At one time, I did go down to Kelly's place there and put it on speakerphone and had Kelly, you know, reiterate a little bit of the council's position, but I didn't have an email that also suggested that, you know, they weren't going to start out on the high end, and it seemed like the council's, you know, without this picking bolts, but I could feel the feeling that, you know, starting at the top was not the direction the council was going. That's why I called a special meeting, because I didn't think I had the authority to go ahead with the full-blown whatever he was asking. And tonight, we would negotiate. If you guys thought this was fine, that's why we're having a meeting, but-
Mr. Chair, I think the thing to do now is, we have to decide how to move ahead.
Yeah.
And we did have a number of candidates that I would certainly be willing to, once more, talk with them, and maybe get another feel for them. The first time, I think, you talk to a candidate, I believe that some of them, being human beings, are very nervous, and maybe they don't always, you expect them to put their best forward, and they probably do, but I think they're nervous and don't always come across the way you would hope. But I thought that we had a couple that, in my view, had a lot of potential. If you cut through the chafe and listen to what they said and what they did where they were, I think they would be people I'd be willing to talk with again. I just think we need to do something.
So Mary, are you suggesting that we just re-interview those other three?
I would go that route.
I think that's a very reasonable position.
And I think we should move-
Well, hang on a second.
I'm not, I'm not sure which three, and if somebody's not, the other thing is, from a data practices standpoint, we probably need to use numbers and not names.
Okay.
Because people-
We aren't happy to that information.
I didn't bring that packet with me.
I have.
Well, I mean, if I could just, so you interviewed five, brought two back, and so I think what I'm hearing, this, bring back the last three of that initial five that you interviewed?
I'd be willing to go that route.
The top two of no left of that.
Correct.
I think what we should do is just make some copies here. I just think we're not going to all-
Be on the same page?
I think we only had four.
You, you have-
One, one-
We're going to interview five, weren't we?
Yeah, there was four, and then two-
You, you had eight people that you had an interest in, okay? One of those people has accepted another job. One of those, well, we have two individuals that withdrew.
Chris, do you have some data that might be helpful?
There was one more in the eight, in the total eight, that I thought you'd get a few votes for interview, but not enough, and since we can't use his name, and I don't remember the number-
There is, there is one person who did interview, and I know he's had some other interviews, I don't know what his status is right now. When I talked with him, I was clear that if his status would change in the process, that I would be back in touch with him. So I tried to at least, you know, plan for things happening that we don't expect along the way.
So we need to go back to the pool, because we just-
But if I might, so, but that individual we're talking about was interviewed, and that was a public interview, if I recall correctly, so I don't know that it's inappropriate to use his name.
We can talk about him as an interviewee, just not a candidate, right?
Let's go, let's go make copies of this, and-
Go ahead.
And then Chip had a question, didn't he?
Um, yeah. Forgive me for being so thick, but how do we get to this place at this time? What I don't understand is when you, typically, when you apply for a job, you know pretty much how much it pays, and et cetera, et cetera. You apply for the job to get hired, then you negotiate the salary? How, how does that work?
Well, salary generally is negotiated for each person, because you got relocation fees if that person is a long way out or close. You know, relocation fees in this case was higher than what Patrick asked for relocation fees, you know, and then there's floating 40 hours that Patrick asked for and got, and that was added on to this one. And so all of a sudden, you know, you have to just look at all the red lines here, start dates and severance pay, and then initial pay. And there was a range from $96,000 to 1.0-
13.
113. So the range was-
And that is the city's, that is the city's-
Yeah, the range is from 96 to 113 for somebody. So each person's going to pick their range.
But since we're starting over, I would like to suggest that when we get to the point of being willing to offer, that then the council determine what they, make the first offer.
Yes, I thought that's what this meeting was.
I think the council should make the first offer. It's an opportunity for us to finesse. The attorney already advised us that we do not have to have a contract, that is currently what our personnel policy talks about. This would be an opportunity for us to put together a package that I hope would be attractive, but I also hope would be one that would give the council room to evaluate that person and make the appropriate adjustment after a period of time. So to me, that's what we, this was a little backward, and I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Well, it's not backwards, because this person proposed this for tonight, and had the consensus, which we need to know what he needs upfront, instead of dragging this out for a month and a half.
Yeah. I just have a question for Sharon, just back to the same one Chip asked earlier, it's just not entirely clear to me. Did we send him an offer that was below what he expected? I don't believe we sent him an offer.
We never sent an offer.
So I just don't, I don't understand.
Well, my instruction was to work with the council president, to come up with what an offer would be. And we had some discussions, and we had discussions that also involved council member Bevins. And at some point, the instruction to me was to work with Patrick to put together a proposal that would be what he wanted, since I understood the city's parameters, and a lot of that discussion had been around salary. And so what I did was kind of work through, what the information was about your benefits, and I'm at it that way.
Right, and you said he was skittish because he felt we were going to offer him lower than he thought, and we didn't even send it out, so I just don't-
Gabe, I came in and said, okay, what if we start out with the $96,000, you know, to see where the bottom is? And, you know, that's what was proposed, the 96 plus the steps, and kind of go through some of this. And Sharon said he is adamant that he is here, so I go, where is here? And then she throws that number. And then a few minutes later, she says, well, then he also wants this. And so everything, I'm suggesting, it's like, okay, he's already got his, he already read the package, he already knew what he wanted, he had all this homework done, and already knew what he wanted, and everything that I was proposing was no, except for what you see. So if you don't accept this, and everything I had did not come into this criteria quite at this level. So that's why we are at this thing.
Yeah, so we never even sent him an offer, and we get this email. I, you know, I, I think Gary might have been right from the start on it.
I'm not sure that that's what I was relate, relate to me. My understanding was, this individual has 10, well, more than 10 years, 15 years worth of experience, and did not feel he should start at the bottom level of the hiring range.
And I agree with that.
Yeah.
We didn't discuss that.
Why didn't we have the discussion here?
Right, that's what I want to know. It sounds to me, when I read this, that somehow he got the idea that he was being made an offer, that we never okayed, and so-
And it wasn't a public meeting, because I didn't know.
My instructions, we left the meeting with my instructions being to work with the council president on an offer.
And that's why the council president suggested immediately last Friday, a special meeting to negotiate this and not get him to where, you know, he's, and I told you that, I called, we talked on Friday.
Yes, we did.
And Friday already, I said, we got to have a special meeting, because you were saying he did not accept or did not want to start there, he wanted to start at different levels.
He wanted to start at step B, he wanted to start at step B.
But I think that in order to just clear the air, what happened, happened, what's over is over, I would say that with any future offers, that the council put together an offer, and they make the offer, and then the candidate comes back with the yes, no, I want to negotiate, but the first offer comes from the-
And, and I'm, you know, we talked about how we were going to move forward, and at that last meeting, and that's, you know, I followed your direction, which was to work with the council president.
No point in anybody blaming anybody. Let's go ahead, move ahead. Let's just move ahead.
But while we move ahead, let's just, let's not repeat the same mistake.
Exactly.
Yes, and I'm totally with you. And I think the council should discuss it, and I don't want to be the person, and that's why I called this meeting. And it wasn't backwards, because you, if you don't know what you're dealing with and what that person wants, and you're on the other end, and everything you say is getting hammered, then it's like, this is not going anywhere. You know, I started 96, nope, then I go 96.5, nope, 97, nope, 98, what do you want in any of them? Now I want this, okay, now we know.
Well, let's start by looking at candidates here. I would like to bring back number four, who we had before, and number, I thought number four was the person that, in my view, was very good, but he was very nervous, so maybe a second chance. And I would, we didn't have Mr., item seven, but I have heard, I don't know him, I may have met him at league meetings, but it's not ringing a bell, but I have heard-
I have that.
-good things about him.
Who?
Number seven. Number seven?
Yeah, I've heard good things about number seven. And I'm trying to think if I'd met him, and I might have at league meetings, you know, but-
Well, he should have, he should have been, either he'd be, I mean, we took the top eight.
You took the top eight. Number one is out, two is withdrawn, you interviewed three, you interviewed four, five you did not go forward with, six you interviewed and has withdrawn, seven was not interviewed, eight withdrew.
If I, I mean, when you took the votes, I think Chris and Sharon both have their vote tallies with them, so you interviewed, you decided to interview five, no, please stand up, Chris, and I think because they had, you know, the first candidate, all eight of you voted for that person. Then it was seven, and then I think it went to five and four and four, and you said, okay, make the cut at four.
Seven had two votes.
But we're in a new, in a new ballgame.
Well, we're still using the numbers that you originally voted on.
Without, without giving Patrick here too much heartburn, how much longer would it take if we failed to search, reopened it?
As far as re-advertising?
Start from the beginning.
Well, it's a three-month process.
Three-month process.
I, I think that, you know, I think that it is a longer process to go through and do that. I would suggest that you start by looking at if there are people in the pool that would be interested in talking to you, and maybe, and maybe make that assessment.
We could be tainted.
Yeah.
She's going to see it.
It's not inconceivable.
(laughing).
You know, could be.
But, I mean, first of all, I think, I want to be clear that the range of $96,000 to 113 is correct, because some people will look at, actually, most candidates will look at that. They will want to be looking at where the top is. It doesn't mean they want to necessarily come in at the top, but they want to know that if the top is out there, that it's achievable. I mean, again, if we look, if we look back, if the starting range is something less than that, or if the starting range is simply $96,000, I think we need to be clear.
But anybody who's qualified for this position is highly qualified. So 96 is still conceivable for somebody who has the qualifications, correct?
Under our salary administration plan, it's based upon your qualifications, so if you meet the minimum, that's where you would come in at. So in this position, it's a, sorry, a BA and five years of experience.
Oh, that's our minimum.
That's our minimum. So if you have 10 years of experience, you're going to assume that you're going to be rewarded for having that little bit of experience. I mean, it's just a common sense.
And just as people look at the maximum, they, I don't know that I can recall a time when I have had something that has come in at the minimum. I mean, it's kind of there as a, as a, as a guide, a lot of times it's someplace in the middle. The one thing you can generally look at is that unless you have a highly qualified candidate, a lot of times it's around the midpoint of the range, so kind of in the middle, if that's commensurate with experience.
Well, I think we should advertise at once, and then, after interviews, the council should make their determination of an offer.
Yeah.
I don't think it should come from you, with all respect. I think it should come from the council, and that's a step that we're going to have to take, in my view. This is the range, and if they say to you, well, you think the council would go higher, I think your comment needs to be, I can't speak for the council.
Mary, I think your, your point, I don't think you're wrong, but we, we need to find people to interview right now.
Right, exactly, I'm with you.
Yeah.
Mr. Trick, can I ask Sharon, I have a question, Sharon.
Yeah.
In this that we got over the email, which has the red and the black.
Yeah.
This is, his request is 10164376, correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Right, right.
Goodness peaches, that's less than 5% above our minimum.
Yeah, that's what he requested.
Why would you back out of the negotiation almost at being that close? If, I'm just suggesting, if this is truly a negotiation, he throws an offer out and doesn't wait for a response, and then withdraws because, because he believes that we want to start the negotiation, right, believes rightly so, and I think that was good on your part. I disagree with, I agree more with Gabe, but I also think that's putting the carpet for the horse. I think we need candidates. But, but I'm just, I'm questioning, I believe that there's more to this story, because if you're less than 4% difference-
Right.
Yep.
And he's only $4,000, $5,000 above our minimum, without having anything but his discussions with you. I believe he withdrew for a reason, using the salary, because that's almost right on. That's way below the top.
What I asked him when I talked with him yesterday, is if he would be willing to go down to $96,000.
Yeah.
And I told him that it was my understanding from discussions, that there was a concern among some council members if he did not go down to $96,000, okay? So that's, that's, and-
Yeah, but that's called a negotiation.
Well, there's also, there's also a piece here, yes, it is, but it's also important not to have anybody have a sense that you've burned bridges, or that you, you know, that you're, you're coming in at a fair salary. At the end of the day, everybody should be feeling it's fair.
Understood. We're $4,000, $5,000 apart on $100,000 now.
Yeah.
Mr. Sheila?
Pulling out on the night of the, of the salary negotiation is burning a bridge, in my mind. I certainly wouldn't give this candidate, after all we went through and how many times we asked him. I mean, I agree with Mr. Sheila, maybe it's good that he pulled out now. You know, maybe it is a favor.
I, I expected him tonight. I'm one person, one vote, he had a chance to talk to all seven. Go ahead.
He has a board meeting this evening.
Kelly, do you recall, when I was offered the position?
Yep.
I wouldn't accept it until you and I talked, because you weren't at, you know, something. It is a serious concern when just one council member, because you don't want to come in having irritated one or two. Just that many is enough to not take a job, to make a lifestyle change, to come up to his community.
Okay.
That's my personal opinion. I'm giving you that as an administrator, and I-
Same thing I said. I mean, basically, you've, you've got to feel the support.
Well, let's look at candidates.
Go ahead, Sharon.
One more question. Are you confident that you're the only person that talked to him, that communicated with him?
I don't know. I mean, I, I talked with him, I talked with him yesterday.
Well, if I can also, one last comment, Gary?
Yes.
When we hire or when you use a headhunter firm like this, we have, it is, I'm not familiar with, any other process other than that, that firm doing the negotiations, and for the council then to take over negotiations would be outside of the norm, completely to my knowledge. And I would also remind the council that, you know, staff-wise, you adopted a salary administration plan. Weekly, monthly, unfortunately, we have people that leave and staff administer that plan, and we follow that plan. I had Chris culminate the data on different individuals in the last couple of years that have started at higher than 85%, and we come back, and we follow the procedures, and that the council authorizes it. So I'm just saying, it's not uncommon for staff to get direction, work within the procedures that have been adopted by the city council to hire that, and Sharon or staff can do that kind of work. And that's part of the union negotiations.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm not sure if this is what Mary meant, I'm not going to put words in her mouth, I'm sure if it's what she said, she's going to correct it. But the way I see this, kind of, when I'm agreeing with Mary, is there's our range. The candidate comes back and says, I would like this, then we have a meeting like this, instead of saying the council is leaning this way, or the council thinks this way, because, you know, there's, there's too many things that can be misinterpreted and can go wrong, and it also is giving an exorbitant amount of power to veto or not to veto.
Exactly.
All right? And, and, and I think that's what Mary was saying, not necessarily like, we're going to call up the candidate and say, here's what we're offering.
No, no.
We're, you know, we have the process, we say, okay, we think candidate X should be C, or B, or A, and please make this offer, and then we would talk as a council. Instead of us all sending our little, here's my suggestion in my email, and so there's, you know, that way, we would have a meeting and say, this is what we think this candidate, this is the range, you could start here, feel, just like we do with union negotiations. Here's where we, here's the range we feel comfortable, this is where you start, don't go above this. And is that, oh my gosh, I'm starting to understand Mary.
Exactly. You hit the nail right on the head. Good job.
Thank you.
But I, let's talk about candidates. Get the show on the road.
All right.
Go ahead, Sue.
But before we would scrap the process, I would like to re-interview four and invite number seven. I'm also wondering if you contacted number nine about why?
Oh, I know why he didn't respond. We know why he didn't respond.
All right, we do.
There was illness in his family.
Number, number nine?
Uh huh.
No, I think you were talking, eight.
Eight, oh, that's eight. Oh, nine, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Eight, number, number nine, I-
Excuse me, excuse me.
Nine is.
I don't know, I don't know what happened.
I don't know about nine.
Nine could be contacted.
Oh, eight was the one that was the first one to withdraw, family issue.
Yes, yes.
So then, as we go further down the list to the no's that you didn't forward, might we consider some of these that have some fairly decent experience?
Yes, and that's why we made copies of this, so that you see, the Q slash A means that they got a questionnaire, that we got additional information from them. So you, you see, you see the people here where we had additional information.
We could look at, like, number 16.
And on any of these, what we can do, and maybe the next, maybe the next step, is to give you the information that I have. They've all received communication at this point, that they aren't going forward. I could certainly contact them, anybody that you have an interest in, and simply say that you would like to meet with them, see if they, if they have an interest. I note that some of these individuals are from out of state. I don't know if you would be open to doing something by video, at least as a first, a first meeting, but that would be, that'd be an issue. at least as a, a first, a first meeting, but that would be, that'd be an issue.
I would be okay with that.
Me too.
We'd give you an initial look anyway.
So, just to wrap up my turn, maybe if we did another round with four and seven? I don't know how we would do that, because four already had one, and seven had none, but...
No, seven had two.
She meant interviews. Because you've interviewed...
No, no, she's talking about interviews.
Interviews.
Interviewed number four, but you haven't interviewed number seven.
We've interviewed four, but we've not interviewed, exactly, sorry.
But I would like to be...
Yeah, let's start with that, see where we go.
So, number four, number?
Seven.
Seven.
Remember, I was going history week. I made a motion, okay, I seconded it.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Bevins, do you have anything to add?
I'll support that.
Okay, Chip?
No. No, I don't have any further.
I have a question. So, we're just bringing two people in to interview right now?
That is the motion.
That is the motion, and only two. So, we're basically down to two finalists, one we haven't met.
Let's see.
It's a, it's a, it's a, let's start, restart back at that point before we go for, into more effort of the, but, you know, if that's...
We invented...
If, if you want to see more paper on the people that we didn't see paper on, and make that a ro, more robust field, and that's...
Yeah, well, I just was looking for clarification. I, I don't think interviewing two people is... I might love them both.
One you know.
One I've met before.
Eight, eight is the person who was...
No, I'm sorry, the eighth of June?
The eighth of June.
It's a Monday, I know.
Yeah.
It's a possible date.
Well, let's go with the motion and the second, and all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Call same side if the motion carries. I'm sorry, are you a gay?
I said no.
And I'm gonna go with a no, too. Thank you.
I'm good.
Mr. Chair, that's, I was just asking, just so I can mull this over, and I know the motion has passed. Would you two no's, tell me what you'd rather do, just so I can hear it?
I would like to go into the pool, have her quickly grab, you know, and do like she did, just go through the pool, get a bunch of candidates, you know, and then let us have a chance to kind of go through, you know, and as quick as possible. I know that we're just down to these two, but without contacting right now, these people probably have moved on, or are gonna be hurt by the fact they were already passed on, and we're just kicking the can down the road.
Are you, are you suggesting going through a re, a application process over again?
Yeah, we have forty-some applicants here.
Okay.
I just think we should have a wider pool.
And that's what I'm looking at, is a wider pool.
Okay.
I don't disagree, how to get things going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like to get started anyway. And maybe one of these can't come. Why don't we take nine for a backup?
Well, once you go out of the...
No response.
Once you go out of the selection process, then it's gonna become murky.
That's not...
I don't know. I would like thirty-eight, one like nine, one like six. Then it becomes murky.
Oh, I do too.
I'm just throwing it out.
You know, I can, if there is anybody else that you want to see, I can send you any additional information that I have if they completed a questionnaire. I have resumes here. So, if you want to take a look at a resume, you certainly can. But I don't have questionnaires in my, in my folder. I just have the resumes. So, if somebody gave us additional information, that's not here, but their resume is. But that can be emailed, that can be emailed tomorrow.
Mr. Chair, do you have direction from the council?
Yeah, we have direction to go with two candidates.
And maybe try to get back to Patrick as quickly as possible. And if the eighth doesn't work, try to have two or three other dates, so that we can see what we can do.
Somebody mentioned number nine. Is that something that somebody would want to include in that, or not? I don't know.
That's one of the two in the motion we just passed?
No, we, seven, oh. The nine, number nine, Patrick just reminded me, we interviewed him at the time we interviewed Patrick.
That's correct.
And as I recall, he, he had several votes. I mean, he was not, not liked. He was well-liked, but they liked Patrick better.
I stand by my vote.
I see why. Okay, so we have, we have the two at this point.
I'm just thinking that if Sharon contacts the num, two numbers that we had, and one of those doesn't seem to want to, or doesn't work out, it would be nice to have one other one that you could contact. And then, that's why I mentioned number nine.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I would go for that.
Need another motion?
Yeah, you would.
I would move that number nine be considered a backup if either four or seven is unavailable.
There's a motion.
Or whatever.
There's a motion. There's a motion.
We should just do all three, we're having a discussion.
Okay.
Do you have a motion on the floor right now?
We have a motion.
Withdraw it, or...
Withdraw it if you prefer to have all three come. I'm just trying to get the show on the road.
There we go.